Consider and get your input on. I called this special meeting, like I said, because I was very, very alarmed with the public health experts and hospital CEOs and what they're sharing with our community. The surge in COVID-19 cases has been growing for weeks now. And just to go over some numbers for today, there were 944 new cases in Pima County. If this stands, this would be a new record in Pima County. We have 8.4% positivity rate in diagnostic testing. We have seen more than 695 Pima County residents' lives lost to this deadly virus. The Star reported last Friday, we have more than quadrupled our cases count from October to November. The county also recorded its highest weekly case count last week with over 3,600 cases in one week, which is nearly 40% higher than the last record, which was in July. In a letter to Arizona DHS, the University of Arizona modeling team wanted, warned that if nothing is done, hospitals will be forced to decide who gets care and who does not. More Arizonans will die, and it could be a catastrophe on the scale of the worst natural disaster the state has ever seen. And so, in my heart of hearts, I feel that mayor and council have authority to take a step to mitigate this tragedy. So I have invited a few people to basically set the stage in terms of their knowledge, their facts, what they know with my colleagues on the council. So let's make sure that we officially start the meeting. I wanted to jump into this, but I know that Roger wants to do a roll call. So let's call this meeting to session and have an official roll call.
Mick Santa Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Durham? Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Finbres?
Here.
Mr. Kazachi?
Here.
Mayor Romero?
Here. And Councilmember Paul Durham is absent, excused. What I'll do before we start with the official meeting and read the item that we have in front of us, I'll ask the president and CEO of Tucson Medical Center, Judy Rich, to share with my colleagues on the council, her thoughts and some of the facts that she has in terms of TMC and hospital capacity, et cetera. Judy, thank you so much for joining us, and I really appreciate your flexibility and making time to join us today. And you're on mute.
Classic mistake, right? Thank you, Mayor Romero, City Council, for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. I come tonight as the CEO of TMC Healthcare, as a nurse, and as an Arizonan. 2020 has become a year that is extraordinary in ways previously unimaginable. The COVID-19 pandemic has changed how we work, live, learn, and unfortunately, in many cases, how we die. We are well into the third wave in Arizona and in Tucson. As the mayor said four weeks ago today, we had 25% of the COVID-positive patients that we have today at Tucson Medical Center. Our intensive care unit is at capacity, and every week we are opening another unit inside the hospital to manage COVID-positive patients. As area hospitals, we have watched the rates rise this month, and we've seen the hospitalizations escalate. Our nurses, doctors, and our clinical teams are on the frontline daily, putting themselves at risk to care for the most vulnerable, complex patients. And they are in impossible situations every day that I believe they will carry with them for many years to come. Our patients are sick, and too often, they are dying, leaving grieving families behind, who at times are not able to be with their loved ones at the end of their life. We appreciate the city convening this conversation around steps that can be taken to mitigate the toll of this third wave as we await the vaccine, which is soon. We believe that the curfew, whether it's an 8:00 p.m. or a 10:00 p.m. curfew, fails, falls short in terms of its effectiveness to be able to stop the spread, flatten the curve, and keep our hospitals from being pushed beyond our capacity. While we have had success over the summer with masks, adherence to those local ordinances has waned as people have tired of this pandemic. We believe stricter measures, like the ones we used earlier this year, is our only path to avert the impending crisis. We recognize that the city may not have the legal authority to mandate such action, and yet we believe it should be the position of the city to advocate to state leadership that this is what's required. Such action should be accompanied by economic relief to businesses impacted by this action. The restaurants, fitness centers, and retailers, who are so important to our community, should not be asked to unduly bear the economic burden of this pandemic. And while government intervention has come to be necessary, I ask every citizen to do the steps to remain healthy, whether mandated or not. Wear a mask, stay home, social distance, and wash your hands. And when available, get the vaccine. Our mission is to take care of this community, but there are limits. If we don't take action today, the crisis will grow and result in unnecessary illness and deaths. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Judy. I really appreciate your being here today, and I know that healthcare professionals, public health experts, hospital CEOs, doctors, nurses are pushing for a statewide mitigation strategy, so I am as well. I would much rather see our governor acting on a much more robust mitigation strategy. What we have in front of us is the possibility of what our authority as mayor and council, but I, you know, will continue with other presenters. I believe we have Chad Whelan? Okay, I believe he's, Chad Whelan is the CEO of UMC Banner. Mr. Clerk, do you see him coming in? Mr. Clerk?
No, I do not, Your Honor.
Okay.
I don't see him, Your Honor.
Do you see Nancy Johnson?
Hi, this is Sudha Nagaligam. I'm the infectious disease physician for El Rio.
All righty, thank you so much for being with us. I know that Nancy was going to try and also jump in. She didn't have the link, but go ahead. Thank you so much for being with us.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor Romero, for giving us this chance to just share a little bit of what's going on here on the ground at El Rio. So should I just go ahead with a little bit of what we're seeing? So, great. So as you all may be aware, El Rio takes care of about 113,000 people here in Tucson, Pima County. And we've tested more than 10% of persons living in Pima County, and we'll just say over the last week or two, we've seen staggering cases of positive rates for the cases we've tested. I just looked back at the data. We were testing at about 6% positive rate in early October, and for the last two weeks, we've gone up to 22%. So it really is staggering, and we're going to send out a community advisory bulletin to really advise our patients to do all that we can to stay at home, really just leave home even only when absolutely necessary, and continue the steps, masking, social distancing. We're doing our part with Kelly visiting too, to really try and keep our patients safe.
Thank you so much. I believe Nancy is also on the call.
Good evening, Mayor. I just got on the call, and I was just listening to Sudha's presentation, and I think she really covered all of our concerns, just about with community members just feeling like this isn't going to impact them. So we, thank you for giving us a little bit of time this evening. As Sudha said, we just also put out a community health advisory to all of our media contacts to hopefully get the message out that we need to take this seriously as a community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nancy. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Sudha. Really appreciate your expertise and coming to speak with our colleagues on the council and the community. Thank you for all you do. Also Chad Whelan from CEO. See?
Doesn't appear that he's joined yet, Your Honor.
All righty, we'll bring him in as soon as he jumps in. I know that we had shared the link to the meeting with him. With that, thank you, Judy, so much for your insight. Also Nancy Sudha, for your coming to present to us. I wanted to start this meeting by sounding the alarms. I'm very concerned about the state of inavailability in our hospitals. I know that we're all very tired of all of the mitigation measures that we've taken so far, but as we've heard, there is a surge of cases in Pima County throughout the state. As a matter of fact, there's a surge throughout the country. And the mitigation measures that we've taken before and the ones that we are currently using, there's, we have to, we have to take additional steps as mayor and council to make sure that we're protecting our community from COVID. It's the same thing that we've been doing, right? Mask wearing, physical distancing, washing our hands, trying to stay home as much as possible. Part of the proclamation and the ordinance that we have in front of us today talks about those things, the safer at home and other mitigation strategies. But the reason that I called upon all of you today is that one of the authorities that the charter lays out for mayor and our code gives council is the ability to have, to institute a curfew for the safety and welfare and health of the citizens of Tucson. And so in order to be able to move in that direction, I want to make sure that Mr. Rankin lays out what we're thinking in terms of what we have in front of you today. And so, Mr. Rankin, can you go over our authority and why we can potentially take this step as a mitigation strategy to move forward?
Certainly, Mayor, members of the council. And I think what I'll do is first I'll lay out what is in front of the mayor and council tonight, the provisions of the ordinance, and then I'll explain why I'm comfortable that you have the authority, if you choose, to move forward on the ordinance and approve it as presented. First of all, what you have for discussion and action tonight is in fact, an ordinance. So it's presented to the mayor and council, the entire legislative body, for consideration and adoption. The ordinance includes all of the following components. It would affirm, reaffirm that COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic remains an ongoing local emergency. So not just an emergency, but it's clearly a local emergency, and you've heard the speakers give you additional information tonight as to, as to that situation. The ordinance also supports and approves the issuance of a proclamation of emergency by the mayor, Mayor Romero, that would order a limited and temporary curfew, and I'll talk about the details of that in a minute. And that advises Tucsonans that it is safer right now to stay at home and avoid social gatherings. The ordinance also makes certain findings that the provisions of the proclamation and the ordinance are necessary and expedient for the preservation of health and the suppression of disease and to prevent the increasing further spread of COVID-19. The ordinance and the proclamation request that Governor Ducey issue orders statewide that are necessary and reasonable to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And the ordinance is written so that if it's adopted, it becomes immediately effective. One quick thing, Mayor and members of the council, I want to make sure I mention upfront before going further about the specifics of the ordinance and the proclamation is that I want to advise you of an addition. I want to read into the record for your consideration as part of the ordinance. Specifically, provision to address what a penalty would be if a person were to violate the curfew regulations that would be imposed. The ordinance would be amended to add a new section four, and then the other sections would be renumbered. But the new section four of the ordinance would read as follows. "The provisions of Section 3, Curfew Ordered, of the proclamation are incorporated into and made part of the ordinance. By adoption of this ordinance, the mayor and council establish that a violation of the regulations established in Section 3 of the proclamation and adopted as part of this ordinance is a civil infraction and is subject to a civil sanction not to exceed $300." A related change would be made in Section 6 of the proclamation to remove any reference to misdemeanor prosecution. The purpose of that would be to establish violation The purpose of that would be to establish violations as civil infractions as opposed to criminal violations, which is the default penalty under state law. But since this is being presented as an ordinance being adopted by the mayor and council as the local legislative body, we can establish the civil infraction penalty as an alternative. Getting back to the specifics of the proposal that's in front of the mayor and council for consideration tonight, as presented, the adoption of the ordinance, which would approve the proclamation, would establish a curfew starting at 8:00 PM. It would run through December 22nd with the hours of curfew each day being the hours between 8:00 PM and 5:00 AM during that three-week time period. Okay, that's how it's presented. It's critical, though, to note that this is not just a blanket curfew that requires people to do nothing but stay at home or prevents them from doing any essential activities. In fact, I want to point out from the get-go that the curfew does not order the closure of any business at any particular time. Instead, what it does is it regulates when people can be in public places, which includes traveling on the public streets. It does not, as presented, prevent people from traveling to or from any essential activity or essential functions even during the curfew hours. Okay? And that's a critical piece of what's being presented because you all remember, we all remember, that as part of the prior orders of the governor, essential functions and essential activities were defined, and this ordinance and proclamation exempts those activities from the curfew. So that means even if it's adopted, people will be able to do and travel to, to and from all of the following, okay? Any healthcare facility, care facility for seniors or folks with disabilities, any shelter, any essential business. That's very broadly defined, okay? So folks would still be able to travel to and be at businesses that include stores that sell groceries, stores that sell medicine, so any grocery store, convenience store, pharmacy, supermarket, or similar, okay? Travel to those facilities would not be impacted by the curfews presented. Businesses that provide charitable and social services, so food bank, nonprofit agencies, shelter services, et cetera. Also exempt are gas stations, auto supply stores, auto repair shops, financial institutions, if any are open after eight or nine or 10 anyway, hardware and supply stores, restaurants for conception off premises. So even during the curfew hours, folks could get takeout, they could get delivery, they could get curbside, they could get drive-through food. So they're not prohibited from doing that. Businesses that sell home supplies, including appliances and necessaries for your, for your home or even your home business, those are also exempt, as are hotels and motels. Essential activities are also exempted, and I'm gonna, I know this is taking some time, but I think it's important for folks to know things that are not, would not be affected, that you wouldn't be prevented from doing during the curfew hours. Essential activities, these are defined terms, so you can still obtain necessary supplies and services for your family, your household members, and your pets. You can, including groceries, food, supplies for household consumption. You, of course, can seek medical, health, or emergency services, obviously. You can engage in providing care for a family member, a friend, or even a pet in another residence, if that's your responsibility to do that. You can engage in outdoor exercise, so you can still go out and walk and get exercise even during the curfew hours. You can travel to and from work. So if you're going to your job or coming back from your job, that's perfectly fine. There are a few other examples I want to mention that are exempted. The curfew, of course, does not apply to first responders, police, fire, but other first responders as well, or going to and from, attending religious services, which is specifically set out in the proposed ordinance. Folks who don't have a fixed address, folks who are homeless, are exempt, of course, because they may not have an alternative to being in a public place during the curfew hours. I also just want to note quickly, because a question came in to me about what about Davis-Monthan and their operations on base? Federal facility and the Davis-Monthan operations are exempt and not restricted by any curfew that would be imposed by the mayor and council. So the legal authority for this action, the legal authority for the mayor and council to take this action, adopt this ordinance, and then for the mayor to execute and issue the proclamation, comes from multiple sources, and I've tried to spell it out in the communication, the ordinance and the proclamation. The multiple sources of legal authority include the city charter, and that's important in multiple ways. The mayor already mentioned the charter authority that is vested in the mayor for the exercise of emergency powers to issue proclamations that are necessary during a time of local emergency. That flows from the charter, which, by the way, is a constitutional power. It's Arizona Constitution that gives the authority to the charter. The charter is also important because it gives specific authority to the legislative body, so not just the mayor, but the mayor and council, for certain specific purposes, and those include making and enacting and enforcing regulations that are necessary to prevent the spread of infectious disease. Okay? That's a specific power that's under the city charter, and that's held by the legislative body, the mayor and council. That's one of the reasons it was important that this action be brought, not, and not just be solely executed through the mayor's proclamation, but also to bring that charter authority of the council into the mix. State law also expressly provides certain emergency powers to the city, and the way the state law is set up is those powers are executed through the mayor after an emergency declaration has been approved by ordinance or resolution. So those emergency powers under the state statutes apply during the time of a local emergency that's been declared, and those powers expressly include the power to issue a curfew within the city. Okay? And then the mayor mentioned the city code, which flows from the charter, which flows from the Arizona Constitution, which again relates to what the power during a local emergency and the power to issue a curfew through a mayoral proclamation is also included there in the code. Now, I know that you've all seen emails and gotten phone calls saying, but, you know, hasn't the governor, as part of his executive orders, said? But I'm saying cities can't do anything, right, beyond what the governor issues by executive order. Yes, I am aware of that. We're all aware of that. In fact, it's even referenced in the proclamation. But the fact of the matter is, is that it's clear, and it's my legal opinion, that the governor cannot use his executive authority through an executive order to void other laws or to eliminate the authority that the legislature has legally given to local jurisdictions through statute or to void the provisions of a city charter. And in fact, part of the litigation that arose out of the governor's executive orders when he was challenged on certain respects of his executive orders over the last seven months, the court determined that he lacked the authority through his executive orders to void another state law or to eliminate the requirements of another state law. He has emergency powers too. In fact, as part of this action, you would be, if you approved the ordinance, asking him to use those emergency powers, but he doesn't have the authority to eliminate other statutes, including statutes that would give you your emergency powers. One last thing that I wanted to mention before I just say I'm available for questions as you keep going here tonight. I think it's important that if you do move forward with the ordinance as presented or as modified with my suggested addition about the penalty, that you incorporate that the reasons that justify that action include the testimony that's been provided tonight, which provides additional record with respect to the current condition of a local emergency within the city of Tucson. So, thank you, Mayor. Happy to take questions as they arise.
Thank you, Mike. I do know that Chad Whelan, the CEO of UMC Banner, is with us tonight.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Chad. Really appreciate you coming, and I also wanted to give you an opportunity to share your knowledge and the facts of the conditions of availability of ICU and other beds and sharing the information that you might have for my colleagues on the council and the community.
Thank you. Thank you for taking time to hear our concerns and for the invitation. So let me just share what we've seen in the last few weeks inside our hospitals. Both of our hospitals has been very concerning. The increasing rates of COVID-19, coupled with seasonal illness, has reached a critical point. As we continue to surge, our hospitals here in Tucson and in fact throughout the country are very concerned about being overwhelmed, as shortages of healthy caregivers will make it difficult to handle the increasing number of patients. And we know that mitigation works. When the state issued a stay-at-home order, we saw a plateau in COVID-19 cases. Similarly, when masking policies went into effect, we saw a decrease during the summer surge. We realize that mandates and recommendations impact more than just our businesses and our emotional sense of well-being, but the reality is, we are in the middle of an unprecedented pandemic that makes these difficult decisions necessary, and we need our community members to do their part and be patient as we continue to fight this virus. Our frontline workers are doing a phenomenal job, but we cannot do this alone, and we must support measures such as curfew to slow the spread of COVID-19. Thank you very much for the opportunity to spend a couple minutes with you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your knowledge and coming to us tonight and being flexible to present to my colleagues. I wanted to offer the opportunity to my colleagues on the council, open it up for comments, advice, feedback, questions. You know, I, I know that we've gone through this together. I know that what we have in front of us might not, might be considered unpopular to some in our community. I know that we're all very exhausted of this pandemic, but as elected representatives of our community, we do have a moral obligation to act and do take necessary steps to prevent continued surge of COVID-19. So I want to open it up for my colleagues on the council to, for comment, input, or Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a specific question, just hearing all of the experts on the phone today, on teams today. Have we heard anything from the governor on the TCC and any additional capacity and resources? I understand the beds and the staffing issues, so do we know anything that would provide additionally that relief with the tsunami that's headed our way right now?
Mr. Ortega or Mr. Rankin, if you'd like to take the question?
Sure, Mayor. Councilmember Lee, have not heard anything directly at this point. I know that we, Mayor had reached out to the office and not had a response as of yet. We are continuing to monitor any action there, and we'll certainly keep you up to date. Unless anyone else has heard anything different than that, we have not heard any direction or any kind of action that they're proposing or thinking about at this point. That's all, Mayor.
Mayor, all I would add to that is that, and you're all aware of it, but that the agreement to allow that use to occur was previously approved by the mayor and council. It gave the administrative approval, or the mayor and council approval for the manager to make sure that that got executed and it could be in place, so that the agreement did get finalized and the contacts are in place, so that should, when, if and when the need arises, will be pulled up.
And we're ready to go, Mayor. I suspect that the protocols would be that your office would be contacted as the chief executive officer, and then we'll, we'll get moving, but we're ready to go, as the city attorney mentioned, but we have not heard anything more at this point in terms of any action.
Any others?
We have not heard anything about the emergency bed situation. And Judy Rich, thank you for talking to us, and I'm wondering, I know the first time we did this, we held up on elective surgeries to have more beds available. Is that being done by the hospitals right now currently still?
We are being very deliberate about who goes to the operating room for surgery. As we have had to meter the patients who need the intensive care unit, that has forced us to make decisions about surgery. And, but I just want to add that it's, it is never about beds. It's always about staff.
Staffing, yes. And I really, I really admire the nurses and all the medical professionals that are working in, and this tough time right now for both sides, the whole city and at the VA hospitals, because they really do a remarkable job sticking in it for the last nine months. My hat's off to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Okay, I guess I'll, I'll jump in. You know, I'm taking it all in. I think similarly to what has already been shared, you know, that we're all, you know, kind of really exhausted and tired of all these measures of, you know, like days of the week looking like weekends, you know, everything just kind of looks the same. So I think I feel for that, and, and I know that this is like a difficult, you know, decision to make as mayor and council, the public health of our community. I think that what really moves me is to hear, like, we're being asked by our healthcare professionals, the people that are taking care of us during this time, that some, that we need to do something, and, and so what do, what do those measures look like? Because another stay-at-home orders or another shutdown, you know, would be very challenging during this time. So I think it's a precautionary measure that allows and really brings to the forefront, like, we're, we're still in the middle of this, and it's not going away anytime soon, and that we're all just kind of waiting patiently, you know, for the vaccine, so that we can all kind of get back to, to the, you know, to the life that, that we knew before the pandemic. So I just, you know, want to thank all the folks that have reached out to us and asked us to, to consider the well-being of our healthcare workers and also the capacity of, of our, you know, our hospitals. So, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. And, you know, I'm glad that you hit that point because the way I see it, it would be much better to have a statewide approach and have the governor institute mitigation strategies that are throughout the state, because I've said this before, Tucsonans, we don't live in a bubble. I know that there are other elements, other things happening outside of the city of Tucson, but I see this particular step as an initial step to continue trying to work with the governor. governor in his office. I know that public health experts and hospital CEOs, doctors, nurses throughout Arizona are advocating for the governor to take mitigation measures statewide, because that would be much, much better. But in the absence of clear direction or immediate action from the governor, I see this one step in terms of the curfew as an initial step while we continue working and advocating for the governor to take action. Another thing is that I've been speaking with our colleagues on the Pima County Board of Supervisors. They are willing to move on their voluntary curfew, either asking, you know, they're working with their county attorney to see if they have the ability to make it mandatory and to move it to align with ours. So whether it's 8:00 PM or 9:00 PM that we choose as a legislative body, Pima County Board of Supervisors are, are willing to take the step with us, to, to align themselves in terms of a, of a curfew with us. So, Vice Mayor? You're on mute, Vice Mayor.
I've got a few things. I'm gonna try to go over them all. There's a few elephants in the room here, and we've got to talk about what this is all This has been a very trying issue today, and it's a necessary one. First of all, I want to applaud the mayor. I got a lot of calls today, and a lot of people were disappointed in the mayor of having this discussion. And the bottom line is, we have to have this discussion. Not having this discussion is a failure of leadership. The idea that we shouldn't be having a discussion right now, when in about a week, we risk having our entire public health system in Pima County fail. We have to have this discussion right now. This could be a moot point, because there are other places in this country or in the state that are gonna have no choice in a week or two. And when you see something like this coming, you have to have this discussion. So let's talk about the elephant in the room. But we've got to face the facts. And the fact number one is that we are in deep stuff. We have one hospital that, at the beginning of this month, had four people, four, that's it, four COVID patients in the whole hospital. Thirty days later, there's 85. That is a what's, 2,000% increase. We have to take it seriously. The facts are, we're in deep stuff. We could be in a lot of trouble. So, we have to have this discussion. The second piece we need to talk about is the healthcare workers. What message are we sending the healthcare workers if we don't, if we do nothing? What message are we sending them if we say, eh, well, we're gonna, we're gonna tell the governor, we're gonna wake, make the governor do something? I'm not gonna criticize the governor over and over about this, and then when I have the opportunity to do something, not do anything. I'm just not gonna do that. Curfews don't solve everything. There's very little scientific evidence right now that they do good or bad. There's actually some that they do okay. I had to do some research today, but at the end of October, several cities around the country were facing spikes in the general direction we are right now. They continued to go up for about a week after they initiated their curfew, and then the numbers went back down in a more favorable way. If you want to check my research, please check the data dashboards of Pueblo, Colorado, Bridgeport, Connecticut, and El Paso, Texas. Those are three of seven cities we looked at. So I think it's important to mention that piece. The next part on my list is, let's talk about the ordinance. And this is where it gets a little bit different. This is where the ordinance leaves something to be desired, and I mean that with no disrespect to the city attorney or to the mayor. I think you guys are right on in the aim, but there's some unintended consequences here. And I don't even think what we're doing is necessarily good or bad. And I think when we're, when you start talking about 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, as a public health thing, the nuances and percentages of how much to limit the spread is pretty nuanced. The curfew has to be the curfew. And unfortunately, with this ordinance, we have an 8 o'clock curfew, and we've tried to say, hey, don't worry, everybody's still gonna be able to do all the stuff they want to do. Well, at the end of the, end of the day, we're probably going to single out some businesses we shouldn't be singling out. The other thing that's happening in this specific situation is that those cities that I mentioned, which include Pueblo, Bridgeport, and so on, their curfews were 10 o'clock. And the reason they're 10 o'clock is because by closing at 8, certain businesses have to eliminate a shift. So we have people that just went back to work, they got off of unemployment, and now they, they're not eligible for benefits, and they're gonna be downsized. And that's an unintended consequences we can't handle. There are businesses like bowling alleys, there are businesses like bars, late night restaurants, after workplaces, definitely there are places like, did I know, theaters, arcades. The workers at those places who just went back to work, they're gonna have to eliminate a shift or completely close. And I don't know if we want to go down that road, because if we keep it at 10, they've still got that golden hour, we're still eliminating, eliminating movement, we should be able to see results as similar to other cities. So I kind of like the 10 o'clock. I think also it would be cleaner in that we match up with this, with the counties voluntary, and if they go to a mandatory on Friday, we'd have that. You know, it's hard to say, hey, we're gonna shut you down at 8 o'clock, 28 days before the eviction moratorium expires for these working families. I don't know if I'm comfortable with that. Hey, if we had the Second Heroes Act, which took a positive step today, I'd feel a little bit better that we'd be backstopped, but for right now, we're not. And so I'd feel a little better if we, we kept it at 10, because I think that we were weighing that public health and that economic piece. And at least with 10 o'clock, we're in line with some other cities that instigated some, some curfews before us, but we're also the only mandatory one in the state. So we're showing, we're taking that action, but at the same time, we're sparing some of the business owners, quite a few of them actually, who would have been forced to close their doors, doors altogether today if we would have said 8. So I'm really more into the 10. I know that we were looking at a 9 o'clock compromise, that just doesn't work, because you still need that extra hour for people to finish up, for people to get, to have that full shift of people. We want them working until 10. So that's kind of my piece there. And I know it's, it's partly my hard ground. I also want to say that, also wanted to say that we can't really count right now on what the states and feds are gonna do. And that's one of the reasons we are having this discussion. We can't expect them to do right or wrong. We've taken actions in this. So, I have a motion for the 10 o'clock with a few caveats, but I don't want to make it out of term. If you guys want to make the, the 8 o'clock motion, I'll probably make a substitute motion. But I'm gonna lay out my cards and say, I have a 10 o'clock motion that kind of takes everything into account. And it, it would basically say that we would, I'd move that we, we adopt a mandatory curfew at 5:00 PM to 10:00 AM within the city limits. The curfew will be consistent with the curfew outlined in the material today, except for the time change in the effective date. The first caveat is that the effective date will be December 5, 2020 at 10:00 PM. This curfew will stay in effect until December 23, 2020. This will allow businesses in the next 72 hours to try and use their perishable inventory and give them some time to make and plan shift adjustments and personnel adjustments. My second caveat is that the city allows, allot $2.5 million of remaining CARES Act money for bars, restaurants, theaters, bowling alleys, arcades, and businesses most of, that are most directly affected by our measure. And finally, the third caveat is that we provide a flexibility of enforcement for business patrons and later workers, so they can travel home without any, without living in fear that their civil, their civil liberties will be encroached. So that's the motion that I have, Your Honor. I thank you for indulging me. I know we're not on the same side of this perfectly, but our ideals and our belief in doing the right thing are the same. I yield my term.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. We do have in front of us an economic package. It's item two on the agenda, so there is going to be continued discussion. We realize that economic help, as we consider different mitigation strategies, is absolutely necessary. So, we have about a $9 million package in item two that we can consider for small businesses, workers and their families, arts, entertainment venues, and, including childcare. So, I do see Councilmember Kazachek's hand up, and Councilmember Fumares. So, Councilmember Kazachek?
Okay, thanks. First of all, I want to thank Nancy and Suda and Chad and Judy for joining us. The perspective of the healthcare industry is paramount in this. And also to Mike Rankin for pointing out initially that this is not martial law that we're talking about, this is not a lockdown that we're talking about. It's a pre-vaccine conversation about what protocols we're putting into place to get us across the finish line that none of us can predict right now. And thankfully, every time I hear a conversation about who's first in line for the vaccine, it's gonna be the healthcare workers, because they're the ones who are literally putting their lives at risk every day. Before I make a couple of comments, I wanted to ask, Judy, you had mentioned that you were getting, that the healthcare people are getting ready to make a presentation to the governor. Can you outline what that's, what's gonna be contained in that, and then I'll keep going after you're done?
There is, is a letter that's in the hands of Dr. Christ, who's the physician in charge of the state of Arizona. And it outlines specific requests for eliminating large gatherings, indoor dining, and several other caveats, including, including a curfew that will, that will be, that have actually gone to Dr. Christ. Chad Whalen was also a part of that. It came from the chief medical officers of the hospitals in the state.
What time, Judy, are you recommending for the governor to institute a statewide curfew?
The state, the recommendations from the chief medical officers is 8:00, 8:00 PM.
And how did you come to that? Or maybe it's for Chad, I don't know, how did the medical industry come to that time?
I'd love for Chad to answer that.
So, I'll take a stab at it. I will say that it really was led by the chief medical officers. And so, you know, I think they really relied heavily on a article that was published in Nature, that talked about mitigating factors and the successes of them, and that curfews are in fact an effective mitigating factor, especially when coupled with others. In terms of how they got to the specific timeline and the cut point, that I don't know. But they did reference the article in Nature, which is, for those, Nature is sort of a preeminent scientific journal.
Okay, appreciate that. Well, so first of all, I appreciate the comments that the council, council members and the mayor have made so far. And as Paul mentioned, since yesterday's announcement, we've all heard from lots of people. I've heard from bar, bar owners saying that they're just barely hanging on. Heard from the Metro Chamber asking if I'd support joining the county with a voluntary 10:00 PM curfew. Until tonight, I didn't hear from doctors and nurses and technicians, because they were busy working the extended shifts and putting their lives and their families' lives at risks, at risk. You know, they're the ones that are crying at bedsides every time patients die without families by their side. So I will tell the bar owners who really are barely hanging on, it's the people in the ICUs. And until tonight, I was going to say that they're 90% full. I guess they're full now. Our local beds are jammed. We are opening up non-COVID units in parts of the hospital, COVID units in parts of the hospital that were two days ago, non-COVID units. Our exhausted hospital workers are working on godly hours in heartbreaking conditions. And the mayor already indicated today's numbers, they're doing nothing but going up. And so, we can't not do anything. To the Metro Chamber, people who had reached out, business is not gonna get back to normal until COVID is under control. And COVID's not gonna be under control as long as we're taking half measures and relying on people's judgments and treating this like it was just a bad flu season. People showed over Thanksgiving that they're not gonna willingly comply with the advice of public health authorities. And we all sat and watched the millions of people literally packing airports. And so we have to act, and frankly, it's probably too little, too late to avoid seeing the infections and the fatalities that are gonna continue to escalate through Christmas and beyond. I don't want to sound heartless, but to the bar owners, your selling whiskey until 10:00 PM is not more important than the well-being of our hospital workers and thousands of patients that they're caring for. So, today, today, no matter how we end up on this, is not about being anti-business. We'll be asking, as the mayor just indicated, we'll be asking the city manager in the next item to allocate more CARES dollars to support the struggling businesses. What we're not seeing is, is any leadership from the governor's office, and his mantra is, we're open for business, and we all want to be open for business. Sadly, the businesses that are thriving the most right now are the healthcare institutions, and they're bursting at the seams. So that's sort of my overarching thought about where we are, and everybody, you know, there's no, there's no particular revelation in any of that. The reality is that we can't do nothing. But what we should do should be informed by the input that we've received. And so all day long, the phones are ringing, the emails are going off, and the texts are happening. As Judy and Chad just indicated, the hospitals don't feel this goes far enough, and they're asking for some statewide action. Wouldn't it be nice if we could flip a switch and make that happen? Paul mentioned one of my concerns, just briefly, and that is that we've got several calls and emails from local restaurants today who have just made major purchases for perishables that they just received. I think we should be sensitive to that, so that they don't wind up having to eat those costs and just get rid of, you know, lose, lose that product. We, we have to, and this is maybe for the next item, the financial item, is that we, right now, don't have the capacity to get money out the door overnight. But whatever we do, we have got to make sure that, that when we allocate these dollars in the next agenda item, that coupled with that is gonna be some protocol, so that we know that those dollars are not gonna sit waiting for some financial participation agreement to be rehashed out and hammered out again. And so 10 days from now, they might, somebody might be getting a check. People are facing a loss of a job, like, immediately if we act tonight. In addition to that, the county can't shift on a dime to, to 8:00 PM, but the mayor indicated that they're gonna be meeting, and they will be meeting on Friday. They're gonna have a special meeting to talk about what their, what their options are. So, Paul sort of touched on some of the thoughts that I was kicking around also, and that is, how about we immediately adopt a 10:00 PM, lean into it for 72 hours, give the county a chance to react to what we have done, make give the county a chance to react to what we have done, make, and then I agree to make it 8:00 PM on, you know, 72 hours from now. What is that? Friday night, Saturday night? That will allow the businesses some reaction time. It will allow the city an opportunity to say, here's how much money we've got, and here's how we're going to get that, those dollars out the door. And it'll give the businesses a chance to, to really adjust to, to the, the new normal. So I, I think we tweak the proposal. I agree with Paul. This has been a tough day. But I appreciate the mayor stepping up and saying, we got to have the conversation. Maybe we're not all talking about checking the exact same boxes, but we are also, none of us sitting here saying that we can just sit here and walk away from it while our healthcare institutions are about to burst at the seams. So those are sort of my general thoughts, and I'm interested to hear what the rest of the council has to say.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it. Councilmember Fimdes, you had your hand up?
Yes, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank you for your leadership in calling this an emergency meeting today and for Mike Rankin and Mike Ortega for getting that proclamation ready to go in the ordinance. It's so important. You know, we have 690 folks who lived in Pima County that did enjoy Thanksgiving and then their families couldn't enjoy it because they weren't here with them, because they, they're victims of the COVID. So I think we need to do something. We need to impress upon the rest of the state. This is an important issue, and we're not getting, we're not going upward, we're getting better, we're getting worse. We need to stop it now before the holidays. But I also like Paul Cunningham's proposal, his motion about, because we got to give the business people that just went back to work an opportunity to, to get going. And I think that his motion is good. I think the finances we can discuss because I think we need to put more for the businesses community as opposed to 2.5. I don't think that's enough right now with the COVID funding to help those guys. And we, again, I agree with Councilman Kozaczek because we got to find a better process to get that money out right away, not sitting around for 30, 40 days like it's been. We need to get it out now. And I think, so with that, I'll, I'll second Paul's motion to the 10 o'clock, starting on December 5th. But then we still have lots to discuss.
If I may, I, I'd like to propose something because I do like the idea of giving some time to our business community. But I mean, like I said, we cannot sit on time, right? Every day that we wait, it's, what was it today, 944 cases of, of COVID-19 individuals? Those are our fellow Tucsonans. That might end up at our local hospitals. So what I'm thinking is that since the 8:00 PM hour was recommended by hospital CEOs, what I'm thinking is that we consider, because there's some thought put on it by scientific healthcare professionals, that we at least consider a 9:00 PM hour. Like I said before, Pima County is willing to bring their time down to 9:00 PM. They were willing to consider 8:00 PM as well. They are listening to our conversation tonight. And so if we were to institute it, hopefully at the same time, which would be Friday, I believe they're having a special meeting, and make it 9:00 PM. That will give, for example, restaurants to serve their dinnertime rush from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and will get people home, as money can get people home. People are safer at home. The governor has said that, public health experts have said that, and aligned with the mitigation strategies that we have now. I think that would, that would really help mitigate. And as, you know, as Judy said, and I think as Steve said as well, this is a dent in what has to be done. And hopefully, the governor will oblige to the scientific community and do something statewide and do a curfew. And the least he can do is do a curfew, statewide curfew and mandatory masks. Hospitals are asking for more. They're asking for a stay-at-home. And so the least we could do is try and protect our residents here in the city of Tucson and Pima County as much as we possibly can. So I would ask my vice mayor to reconsider his motion for 9:00 PM and effective within the next 72 hours. Councilmember Kozaczek?
I was going to ask Vice Mayor how he felt about beginning at 10:00 and then leaning into it in 72 hours, rolling it back to nine.
I think that would, I think, I think we can consider that, but we've got to, we got to let the county do it. I really want it to be clean on that. In other words, if the county wants to set it up, if the county votes to make the curfew nine on Friday, then we'll go back to nine. But right now, again, we can only do what's in front of us. Right now, in front of us, the county has a voluntary curfew of 10:00 PM. As I said in the beginning, the reason I'm, the reason I'm, I, I understand the nine o'clock argument. I mean, everybody's well-intentioned here. But for me, part of the reason I said 10:00 was it's, it's the elimination of that shift of people. And if we roll back to nine, people have to, more, more and more people have to cut their hours. There are more and more part-time employees who just got back into the workforce, who are now no longer in the workforce. And if they came off of unemployment, they're not even going to be eligible to get benefits. That, that is a, that is a repercussion we really have to consider. I'm, I, I'm also working off of several different cities around the country that did 10:00 PM. So I want to stick with 10:00 PM. That's kind of my hard ground. But I'm open to, if the county changes it, we should, we should definitely adapt to what they do. And I can put that as a fourth caveat in the, in the motion.
Vice Mayor, what I'm trying to prevent is a couple of things. I'm trying to listen to our healthcare professionals, and I'm trying to avoid confusion. And with my conversations with my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, they are willing to, to come along with us to 9:00 PM when they have their emergency meeting. So I'm trying to, you know, establish a particular time that Pima County can come with us. And look, we've acted before, we've jumped before for the benefit of our community without other jurisdictions. It's better to do it with other jurisdictions, but when we have the county willing to come along with us, I think we should institute it at an earlier time based on the feedback of our public health experts. I do see Councilmember Santa Cruz's hand up and Councilwoman Lee's hand up as well. Councilmember, you're on mute.
I have my kid here. So that was my understanding of what you said earlier, that the county was willing to complement whatever we instituted here within the city. And I also feel more comfortable with, with the 9:00 PM as a compromise between what we're being asked by our healthcare, you know, professionals, and then also the need, trying to meet some of the needs of our, our business owners. I also just kind of, again, say, aside from the, the small business money that we're trying to allocate with the next item, that we're also putting a significant amount for workers and families to kind of help alleviate the pressure for like, you know, employees who aren't, you know, like, aren't the small business owners, but they do work for a small business that's been impacted at this time. But I just want to say that I feel more comfortable with the 9:00 PM and the 72 hours waiting till Friday or whatnot, you know, so that it's a little more coordinated with the county.
Councilwoman Lee?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate all of the conversation tonight. I've been soaking it all in. And today, my team and I did a lot of research into, you know, positive, negative impacts of, of this policy decision on businesses, on people as well, to really come prepared for this meeting. And this might be a crazy idea, but right now, we know that the county has a voluntary curfew until 10:00. And then on Friday, it sounds like they're going to be meeting. So for the sake of coordinating with the county and the ease on our constituents and understanding what is what between the county and the city, I just wanted to throw out the idea of the 10:00 PM until Friday or a voluntary 10:00 PM, just perfectly in alignment with the county until Friday, just to not confuse people. Because I do feel, you know, if we're 9:00 PM here for 72 hours and then we change, that's just a lot of change to impose on people. So I just wanted to throw out that particular idea. And also, you know, I think that in talking to a lot of folks today, the restaurant industry, service industry particularly, is feeling a lot of, a lot of blame for a lot of the spread. And really, there's a lot of contributing factors. So if there's a way that we can look at other businesses as well and hand sanitizing stations and measures that don't just look at restaurants, for example, I think that that would go a long way with, with our mitigation steps as well in addition to looking at this curfew. So those are just my thoughts.
All righty. I will consider a motion, whatever motion comes out. I, I want to make sure that my colleagues on the council feel comfortable as we move forward. This has to be a unified approach, so I will consider a motion.
I wasn't sure if Paul had made, formally made one, because Richard seconded something, but to adopt the 10, this is what I understood, to adopt a 10:00 PM, lean into it for 72 hours, and roll back to make it consistent with what the county does on Friday.
That's what I was considering, Madam Mayor.
Your Honor, I already accepted that as, as an amendment. I said that the county adopts, adopts nine, we'll, 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 we'll change it. But ours is for 10:00 until, until the county meeting. Ours is till, ours is uniformed with the county until whenever. And if they change their time, we're going to match. We can put that in there, can't we, Mr. Attorney?
Repeat your motion.
Yes, move on. I move that we adopt a mandatory curfew of 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM with the city limits. The curfew will be consistent with the curfew outlined in the material, except for the time change and effective date. The following caveats are included in this motion. Caveat number one, the curfew will be effective Friday, December 5th, 2020, at 10:00 PM. The curfew will stay into effect until December 23rd, 2020. This will allow businesses to try and use, use up some of their perishable inventory as well as give them some time to plan shifts adjustments and personnel adjustments. The city will allow $2.5 million of CARES Act money, which we will discuss in item two. Caveat number three, we will provide a flexibility of encroachment for business patrons and, and for workers so that they can travel home with any fear of any encroachment of their civil liberties. And caveat number four is if the county changes their voluntary curfew time to any other type of curfew time, whether it's mandatory, voluntary, that our curfew time follows suit.
The only thing I'd say is Friday is the 4th, Saturday is the 5th.
Yeah, so I was going to say the 4th.
I stand corrected, the 4th.
Which one?
The 4th, Friday, the 4th.
And I'll, I'll continue to second that, Madam Mayor. And we'll make the adjustments when the county makes theirs. The other question I had was the, the funding for the small businesses also needs to be allocated in item number two in our agenda today.
So there's a motion and a second. Any continued discussion?
Mayor, I just, I guess I just wanted to say, I, you know, I thought we had an opportunity to kind of set the tone so that the county could follow suit and not the other way around. So I, I would still prefer a 9:00 PM, starting Friday, if we can coordinate with the county to get it at that time.
Mr. Rankin?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, I just had a question. Would your motion include the change to make it a civil infraction rather than criminal penalty, as I referenced in my comments?
Yes, yes, that's correct. As outlined, as outlined in the material or the discussion that made prior to, it, it's, it's supposed to be consistent in the presentation that you made prior to the motion.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cunningham, would you consider moving that to 9:00 PM? So that the county could follow suit?
My hard ground is 10:00 PM. I've already explained that. I think that, again, if, with the second, that extra hour means a lot because it's, it's about the number of people per shift. There's, Roadhouse Cinemas doesn't get out until 9:30. Now, all of a sudden, we're, I, I just don't, I, I, I have extremely, I think we're doing more harm than good with that. I mean, we're talking about an hour here. So I won't accept that as a, as a, as a change.
All righty. Any further discussion?
I would just say that I appreciate everyone's input, and this has been a, we've gotten a lot of, we've heard a lot today. And I reiterate the, my gratitude to the members of the healthcare industry who are with us and who are also watching or listening. We got to be careful that, with it, that the, that the cure does, is not worse than the disease in this one. And I think the impact on the small businesses is something we got to lean into this and give them a chance to adjust or we're going to be picking up a lot of collateral damage pieces that we don't want to be facing either.
Yeah, and I like the, I like the, being able to get, be flexible with, with our small businesses. I know that we're all going through a very difficult time. But, you know, our hospitals are being overwhelmed. We must take decisive, quick action. And, you know, I would have preferred what our hospital CEOs in, in the hospitals throughout the state are asking Governor Ducey to do, which is an 8:00 PM curfew. But I also understand the input from our community and, and want to make sure that my colleagues on the council are, are, you know, happy and on board and in solidarity with whatever decision we make tonight. So any step we take is much better than not doing anything. So with that, Mr. Clerk, let's see, let me read the, the item. It's a City Manager Communication, number 417, dated December 1st, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, can you read the item?
Ordinance number 11808, relating to public health and safety and the prevention of community-based spread of infectious disease. Finding and reaffirming that the COVID-19 pandemic constitutes a continuing local and civil emergency, reserving city and mayor and council authority to make and adopt additional regulations and declaring an emergency. This also includes the amendment as read into the record by the city attorney.
Mr. Attorney, did you want to add anything?
Mayor, if the motion as made is approved, then we will revise the ordinance consistent with the motion to, as well as the proclamation, which is attached to the ordinance. I would expect, well, I may have more to say after, after the action is taken, one way or the other. Thank you.
So what, what is the council's pleasure?
Your Honor, I'd like to call the question.
All righty, let's go to Rock. Alrighty, let's go to roll call.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Mayor Omero?
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Alrighty, item two.
Item three, Your Honor.
Item three, I'm so sorry. Item three.
Coronavirus Relief Fund, Mayor and Council's Strategic Plan and Expenditures.
City Managers Communication, number 418, received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled for mayor and council to discuss the Coronavirus Relief Fund and the Mayor and Council's Strategic Plan and Expenditures. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I sent you a note earlier, it was actually later this afternoon, outlining some thoughts for your consideration. Mayor, if you indulge me, I'll just quickly go through them, and then I'll open it up to questions from members of the council and yourself. So first recommendation is for an additional $4 million for testing. The testing would consist of continuation of testing at Udall, an expansion of the El Pueblo Center testing, as well as pop-up sites. Again, that's $4 million through the end of December. The second one is $2 million for small business grants. Those would be through the YWCA, our current partner, and our current agreement would be modified. Number three is workers and families through the Women's Foundation, $2 million. Again, that is based on the length of the pandemic and the need that is in the community. Arts and entertainment venues through the Arts Foundation of Tucson, Southern Arizona, $750,000. Childcare, and this is specifically to the providers through the Catholic Community Services Partnership of $250,000, for a total of $9 million. It's important to note, because I did hear in Vice Mayor Cunningham's commentary earlier, my expectation, at least my proposal, is that the criteria is the same as what was established by council previously for all of these items. So a couple of other things to consider. Number one, what I would also look for is authorization from the council to establish revised or amendments to the FPAs, the Financial Participation Agreements, so I don't have to bring them back to you. That's one of the challenges that we run into, is the logistics of having it come back to you. Because these organizations currently have agreements with us, it's a lot easier to modify it, unless we're modifying the criteria, and we'll get to that in a bit. Mayor, I'd also... I did provide you with a summary sheet of the Coronavirus Crisis Reserve allocation. Just to refresh your memory, council, you did allocate monies for the Crisis Reserve at the start of the November 17 council meeting. We had about $17.2 million. After about, I believe it was $5.5 million that was allocated as a part of the November 17 meeting, that left about $11.6 million. With a $9 million increase in expenses, that will leave about $2.6 million going forward. So Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions. I do have another thought there, but I'd rather open it up to questions from the council. And I do have this material I can share on the screen, if anybody would like to see it. I'm happy to do that. But at this point, I thought you do have the materials and what was provided earlier today.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. I just want to thank you and my colleagues on the council for making it such a priority to put $70 million, if we approve your recommendation today, in the hands of workers, families, small businesses, nonprofits, arts and cultures, entertainment venues, you name it. $70 million of the $96 million that the city of Tucson received in CARES funds will be going to the community, to small businesses, to families. These are critical dollars that are helping support working families and small businesses, as well as nonprofits, artists, entertainment venues, for rent and utility assistance, for food, for gas, childcare. I don't think we're discussing this enough as a city. And I don't think the business community is giving the city of Tucson enough credit for these funds. This relief package was specifically designed to help with any heartache and any loss of revenue from small businesses and for their workers. And so I'm proud of what mayor and council has done. I'm happy that we are thinking of adding additional support. I also hope that both Governor Ducey and Congress follow suit in providing additional financial assistance to individuals, to small businesses, to nonprofits, to arts and culture, and entertainment venues, such as we're doing in the city of Tucson. And so let's not let that go unnoticed. We are asking our small businesses and our community to sacrifice. It's not sacrifice for sacrifice purpose. It is to help our community and our hospitals not be overwhelmed. So I sincerely hope that the step that we took just a minute ago actually makes a difference to put a dent on the spread of COVID-19. I know that scientists and public health experts are still advocating for much more drastic measures because of their concern of our hospitals being overwhelmed. But with that, I'll open it up for my colleagues on the council for continued discussion. Councilmember Kozaczek?
Thanks, I agree. A lot of the rhetoric that we got throughout the day was, you know, what's the city doing? Well, $70 million of doing is not nothing. And so I'm glad that you made that point. You know, we are stepping up and walking the talk. These new dollars, I think, are going to come at an absolutely critical time, now that we have instituted the curfew that frankly may have an impact on some of the small local businesses. And so it's important that we do institute these new dollars. And so I'll reiterate what I had mentioned during the earlier discussion, and that is, how do we get these dollars out the door quickly? We are a couple of weeks, a few weeks away from the holiday season. We cannot go through this torturous process that we've gone through before and have the agencies that we've been working with sitting on these dollars when the calendar flips over into the first of the year. And so to City Manager, you know, what protocols can you suggest for coming out of your office, so that we know that once this council agrees on these new dollars, that they're not growing moss and that they're moving into the hands that need them? And the other thing I would say is that some of the conditions, if I remember correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, that are built into some of the Financial Participation Agreements, one of them is that if you've received PPP in the past, you can't qualify for this. And those dollars are long gone. And so I would like us to reconsider that condition, because these are new applicants, but they're applicants who have spent those dollars months ago, and they've got current needs. So those are my two points.
Right, and I also, specifically with a small business grants, I feel that, you know, limit is $10,000, and we might want to consider a $20,000 limit, because there are some businesses that receive less than $10,000. And so being able to consider the need and the effect of what this pandemic is doing to small businesses, we should be able to be a bit more flexible and be able to provide additional support if a business is highly impacted. You know, some businesses lose $2,500, $5,000 a week. So we just want to be as flexible as we possibly can. I know that the YWCA is at the ready and wants to, and does have funds to move them fast. But, Mr. Ortega, if you want to add to the conversation, and then we'll go with Councilwoman Lee, and then the vice.
Mayor, thank you. So Councilwoman Kozaczek brought up two points. The first is, how do we assure getting the dollars out quickly? And if you recall, one of the challenges was just the bureaucracy of establishing agreements. And, you know, we had the participants or the partners have to go through their legal teams, et cetera. Those agreements are all in place now. Part of what I had recommended in my commentary was that if the council authorized me, gave me the signatory authority to move the amendments to those agreements, I can move those very quickly. That's a matter of going to them directly, having a conversation, getting the amendment in place, and then we're off to the races. The second point related to that, that I was thinking, as Councilwoman Kozaczek was mentioning, I can give you a weekly update on where those dollars are going. We are receiving good feedback from the partners. We did reach out, the staff did reach out to all of them today to ensure that they were going to have the capacity to do this. They have assured us they are. But again, the accountability needs to be clear, and I can give you weekly updates, I'm happy to do that. I am a little bit nervous about changing the criteria. I understand what you're saying in terms of the PPP or allowing folks to get grants that received PPP in the past, and maybe increasing the amount to $20,000. I am A-OK with all of that, as long as it's hammered out tonight. Because otherwise, it's an iterative process, and iterations take time. So I am fine with revising these criteria that you all outlined, Mayor and Councilwoman Kozaczek. But I would ask that that be defined for me tonight, so that when I go and have those discussions for this, quote, "new money", the FPA, the Financial Participation Agreement Amendment, will reflect that, and then we'll keep this moving. Because otherwise, it's just going to burn up time, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Vice Mayor Cunningham, and then Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Mayor. Forever ago, my parents owned a small diner in my hometown, and I was a waitress. That was one of my first jobs, if you can believe me, waiting tables. It was a nightmare. But I really understand what these family-owned restaurants are going through and what the waitstaff is. And during the holidays, that's when a lot of people tip really well. So I'm really so grateful that we have this opportunity to help provide this economic relief, especially paired with the potential impact of the curfew. So I just wanted to share that personal experience and gratitude to the City Manager, to the Mayor, and to everyone for considering this. To the manager, also along the lines of criteria, I don't know if it's possible, specifically with this allocation, to have a checkbox that says, you know, I'm specifically impacted by this policy decision, this curfew, and in any way to quantify that and track that and make sure that we're tying that to the action that we're taking, if that would help, or at least help us understand the impact and what we're doing to offset that. And my third question or comment for consideration is really, hearing what the healthcare professional said today, is there anything that we could do with what is remaining of the CARES Act funding to directly help the hospitals in any way with their immediate needs? So those are just some of my comments and thoughts.
Mayor, Councilmember Lee, thank you for those comments and questions. First of all, I think that we can certainly include criteria that, again, check the box. You've been impacted by the action that was taken tonight, happy to do that. That might be difficult to prove. And again, keep in mind that we're trying to develop criteria that's objective, so that businesses are all treated fairly and so forth. Happy to do that. What I would like on that one is some flexibility, where I would develop with the staff some language that the partners would use for this, and then we'll do the best we can to implement that. I think that will be a little more difficult without putting a huge burden back on the business or back on the applicant. But I understand the spirit and intent, and we will encapsulate that in language going forward. As far as the use of Coronavirus Relief Fund monies for hospitals, again, it has to be a function of the COVID-related expenses. I will explore that. I don't know that we have explored that specifically. That would be the remaining $2.6 million that could be available. And I'll certainly challenge the staff to think about what opportunities there may be there, and I can get back to you. Mayor, just as a reminder, we are getting together again on the 8th, and I can give you a report, at least on that piece of it, for the 8th, for some potential further discussion, if the council would like to have that.
And Councilwoman Lee, I know that the hospitals received CARES Act money as well, directly, as well as local clinics. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that they received funds directly. Vice Mayor?
I did not, thank you, Mayor.
Then Councilmember Fimbres, and then Councilmember Santa Cruz.
I move, unmute Mike Paul.
Mike, you have a detailed tally of what we put into small businesses, workers and families, kind of all that stuff. Any... I'd love to know how much we've spent, so... Just including utility relief. I want to try to add up those numbers, because I want to... Look, I don't want to do overkill, but I think there's something else we've got to consider here. We're only going to have $2.6 left after this $9 million package. And what really concerns me is, I'd really... I think we should put, consider, I want to put this out there. We put, we take a haircut on the testing, on, you know, maybe combining the arts and the small business, so that we can help with theaters and performance art, and actually reduce it. And the reason is, is I want to have $4 or $5 million for vaccinations, in implementing vaccinations and administering vaccinations. Otherwise, we're going to have...
We cannot pay for vaccinations. Vaccinations are federally funded and will be distributed to the states. We cannot pay for vaccinations.
No.
Period.
All right.
Well, that should be federal funds coming into us.
Well, I hope it is, and I just don't... I want to... I'm not talking about actually purchasing the vaccinations. I'm talking about the administrative costs to administrate them. In other words, to be able to make it as free as possible, the same way we're doing. And I want us to be in that position where, ideally, the testing sites that we've established could lickety-split be...
The testing sites have been selected by the state in cooperation with the Pima County Health Department. TMC is a testing site, as well as UMC Banner. It is really, really out of our control, Vice Mayor, anything related to vaccination.
All right, well, that ends that. So I guess that I kind of like it. I think that the one thing I'd say about the small business portion is, we may want to look at square footage, because the leases are a lot higher per square foot. We may want to look at past sales tax revenues. If a business has been really successful in contributing to the city's general fund, and now they're teetering in bailout failure, it's worth our while. it's worth our while to help them out. I also think we should consider the sector that's going to be most affected by the curfew, which are not, which are not limited to bars, arcades, bowling alleys, mini golf and theaters, theaters and performance arts. So I'd say that those are, that's kind of my input. I wanted to have the two and a half million in there. Quick question, we just put two million more into testing. Now we're putting another four. Explain to me how that breaks down and what does that help us?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cunningham, we are using about a million and a half dollars per month at Udall. That's the, that's the cost of the testing. They have been back-to-back the entire time and we're using quite a bit of money to keep that facility open with just the hours that are there today. And they do have a pretty significant backup of testing there. We also are continuing to utilize.
You got me at Udall. It's good. I like, I'm all about the testing anyway. You had, I just want to make sure I know what we're doing. The testing, I think, look, the community testing, you know, the people around the country have said anybody who wants a COVID test should be able to get one for free. Well, we kind of have that in Pima County. And though we did get backstopped up, right now you can get one within twenty-four hours at any time. So I think that we're, we're on the right track. I like where you are as far as your thoughts on this last nine million. And I think the rest, we can, we can do what you need to do so that the financial stability, the fiscal stability of both the general fund and and all the missions that we have in order to battle COVID are there. So that's kind of where I'm gonna leave it because I have to go chase my kid. He is running out the door.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Fimbres and then Councilmember Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Michael, can you give us a breakdown of all the testing sites and what the allotment is for them? I know that we're doing stuff in El Pueblo also and I want to make sure that it happens correctly. The other, the other concern I have is I know that the mayor, the vice mayor had put in two point five for small businesses. I would like to see us go to another, add another five hundred thousand to make it a whole three million in that pot for them. That would leave us two point one million left. Because you know, it's, we're going to impact a lot of folks with this curfew and I want to make sure we have funding available. The other process is I want to give you the authority that you need to do to make sure we get this money out like Councilman Kazachek has said. We need to get this out quickly. We cannot let this stay because we already lost restaurants because they didn't get the funding that they needed when they were closing. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So do you need a motion now, Madam Mayor?
Thank you, froze.
Madam Mayor, then I would move that we accept the city manager's recommendation except for small businesses instead of two million, add it to three million in there. And that would be my motion. And to give the city manager the leeway, he needs to get this out quickly.
Second name.
I think the mayor is offline. There is, it sounds like there's a motion in a second. But I ask, I mean, I'm kind of, in my capacity as Vice Mayor, I'm gonna ask that we hold the meeting and let the mayor get back online. This is.
Vice Mayor, I think that Councilmember Santa Cruz also has her hand up as well.
I'm sorry, I lost connection there for a second.
And Councilwoman Kazachik made the second on it about accepting the manager's recommendation and also giving him the authority to move quickly on this. And also by changing the small business grants to three million instead of just the two. That was my motion.
Okay. Councilmember Santa Cruz.
So I just wanted to make a comment, a couple of comments. The one with the testing that it's actually, Vice Mayor, you can't get a test within twenty-four hours. All the testing I've tried today was a week out from today. So I had to go and pay to get a test done today. Because I needed, you know, I couldn't wait a whole week for them. So I still feel like we need to make a lot of improvements on our turnaround time for booking appointments around our testing. I think that a lot of the criteria that we're talking about right now, and I don't know how the city manager feels about this, but it also seems like when it like added just like added things, you know, that might take longer, you know, to kind of flesh out. What I have heard from some of the folks who are helping us distribute the funds has been the admin fees. That is actually not enough, what we've allocated for admin fees to get enough people to like help get the money out. That we're so focused on, yes, get the money out, but we're not thinking about the people, you know, behind the scenes that are necessary to make that happen. So that's something that we have to take into consideration. I want to continue to push that like, yeah, that there's still, there's still a lot of businesses that didn't receive any, any P P E or any other funds. And I'm open and I understand that some of that money has run out, but that we continue to give a preference to folks who didn't receive any other funds. They're still operating, but also consider, you know, folks that did receive funds at some point and are in a dire situation now as well. And then actually, I know we're all kind of throwing out ideas of what to do with the remaining money. And I really think it's important that we don't forget about our transit. That we had basically voted to make our transit free through December. And they're wanting direction because they want to get back to cash, you know, the fairs, fair box revenue. And so I would ask the city manager to look at opportunities where we can extend this for another two, three months while we figure out what the federal, what the feds are gonna do around any kind of transit allocation to kind of help us offset the costs. I think the folks, depending on our public transportation system right now, are the ones that are most impacted and are most vulnerable, you know, population. And that this is a very small way that we can take this weight, you know, off the shoulders. So that would be my request.
Councilmember Fimbres, you said you made a motion. I didn't hear it, but.
I made a motion, Madam Mayor, and I like Lane's recommendation on the transit folks and extending the fair because those people need, the poor and most vulnerable citizens need to get transferred, to get to the doctors, get to the shopping and get the things that they're doing. And if we're gonna impose, you know, till the December twenty-second, it's gonna be extra stress on a lot of people. So I agree with her. We need to look at that, Mr. Manager, also. But I made the motion to accept the manager's recommendation but adding the three, instead of the small business, two million to three million. And it's giving the city manager the authority to act quickly so we can get this money dispersed and put out.
Yeah. And with the consideration that Councilmember Santa Cruz just said that there are some businesses out there that have not received.
Exactly.
That priority should continue. But people that have received or businesses that have received and individuals and workers as well that have received other types of help should not be eliminated from the possibility of getting additional funds. Because, you know, this happened back in April, May, June.
They're hurting now, again, also. They're putting a digital stress on them.
There, so. Mr. Manager, do you have a sense of the direction that the mayor and council is giving you?
Yes, ma'am, I do, but I do need, I do need to make a few comments and make sure we've got clarity here. So thank you so much for the conversation and trying to give me the framework. As I, as I mentioned earlier, I'm good with changing criteria, but I need to have it defined. So what I'm gonna try to do tonight is just guide you and give you the, what I heard and some, the way that I'm gonna approach it on my end, just so that you understand. I'm gonna try really hard to get you to where you want to, you want to go. So the first thing, I think, Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Cunningham talked about this square footage of the businesses, et cetera. I think the best way to do that, if we're going to add a metric there, is to tie it to sales tax. I think the sales tax generation by that business could be of value as a, as a, as a check, if you will. Now, keep in mind that.
Before you move on, before you move on, I, you know, I, I would hate to add additional additional caveats and to have businesses either show square footage or sales taxes. It really goes against the idea of trying to get those funds out as quickly as possible. And I believe that my colleagues on the council and I want to make sure that there's a process already that the Y Dub and the Arts Foundation and Catholic Community Services and all these nonprofits that are helping us disperse the money, they already have a process. They already have an application out. If we start changing those particular details and logistics on how to apply, then it will take longer to get these funds out. And so I, yes, do, should we expand the amount of, of the funds? Should we allow for those have received, for those businesses and workers and families and you know, artists and entertainment venues that have applied before to try and reapply if the need is there? But if we start asking for sales taxes and square footage and those things like that, it really is going to trip us and add more time. And time is not what we want to add to this process.
So I'm in absolute agreement, Mayor, and that's why I wanted to go over this. Because what I heard from Vice Mayor Cunningham in his motion was to establish some of that criteria and that's why I'm trying to, trying to get that clarity. I believe, I think it was Councilmember Lee had mentioned the impact of the curfew as one of the, one of the criteria that we would, we would ask. And I said, I'll, I'll ask, but I don't know how we, that becomes very subjective. Somebody can just say, yeah, we've been impacted, et cetera. That's what I'm trying to do. If, if there's not an interest on the part of the council to go down those metrics for the impacts and leave the criteria the same with the exception of the amount and the whether or not folks have received help or assistance in the past, I'm fine with it. That makes it very easy for me and then I can, I can move forward. But I just need a little bit of clarity on that. I have no problem with the suggestion that maybe we give priority to those that have not received funding before, but we don't discount those that have received funding before. And so it's basically a point system and I'll have to work with the, the partners to come up with some criteria there.
And the, the applications for all of these programs are already out. As a matter of fact, workers and families, there was an overwhelming response. And so the Women's Foundation is going back to those that didn't receive in the first round of funding. But everyone is being asked, asked from, from entertainment venues to arts, to small businesses, to workers and families, to nonprofits. They're already being asked if they're being impacted by COVID nineteen. So that question is already there. To have to add another question to all of these processes will set us back and maybe ask people to reapply. And so that's gonna take time. So I would suggest that we not and that the question of are you being impacted by COVID nineteen, stay there and the process stay similar with the caveats and the changes of additional funding. You know, to expand the additional funding and, and allow those that are still in need, are still being impacted to reapply if they need to. I, I see Steve's hands up and Councilwoman Lee and I believe the Vice Mayor.
So I agree with that. One of the problems that we have at the state level, you know, with respect to the distribution of eviction support is that the application process is so cumbersome that many of the people who are applying don't even have the documentation to apply. And so the governor has millions of dollars in eviction support sitting in his coffers now saying, well, it's here, all you gotta do is apply. Well, they can't just apply. So whatever we can do to, you know, get the barrel of grease laid on the skids and get them, get the cash, you know, sliding out to people is really what we need to be doing. And to be adding criteria is only gonna make it more difficult on people to get the cash that they need.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't asking for this to be part of the criteria for, for this additional funding, more so a checkbox so that we can track internally how our decision has been offset by these funds. So, you know, from a software background, it's adding a checkbox. So that's really, I wanted to just clarify what my intention was because I think it's an important story to tell when clearly we got about ninety emails today from the community with concerns on how our curfew decision would impact the economy and small businesses. And I think it's a really important story to be able to tell on what we're doing specifically to address that. So that was my intention with that, that question.
Mayor, thank you. That's very helpful, Councilmember Lee. Because I, I was going down the path of, we wanted like literally a checkbox as, as people applied. If it's simply for tracking, we can do that and that doesn't really change the criteria. And then Councilmember Kazachik just clarified impact to COVID versus impact, I'm sorry, impact from COVID versus impact from the curfew. And that's helpful so that we continue down the same track that we've been on. And it's just really a matter of, you know, the, the amount, the twenty thousand dollars and the businesses that have received, have not received are given priority, but it doesn't preclude someone that has received from receiving a grant.
All righty. I do see Vice Mayor Cunningham's hand up. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. Look, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel on the thing, but I want to make this public because this is, this is where I'm frustrated with our first round of CARES Act. There's a business in Ward Two. It's under one E I N number, but it operates three separate businesses. It operates the Wild West Show. It operates two restaurants and it is an icon within Tucson. And it got hammered by the pandemic. They are in the entertainment business. They are, they are an establishment that tourists come to just to get their tie cut off while they have a steak. And they got screwed in this last round of funding. So then I want to put on the record right now that if the Y W C A, whoever our vendor is, can figure it out, that's a group that should have gotten funding in the first place. And I don't want a single, I mean, we shouldn't, it shouldn't be like this. We shouldn't pick and choose which businesses get it or don't. But, I mean, that's kind of where the frustrations are lying is that at certain points, you just, you just feel left out. So I, I know that that's unorthodox and it, it and that business is strong and that it may survive the pandemic anyway. But it's, it's a part of Tucson's culture and it's a part of the east side that it's been around forever. And if you haven't gone to the Wild West Show, you should. It's one of my fans. So.
We have to make sure that we have the information for both entertainment venues through the Southern Arizona Arts Foundation and for the small businesses through the Y W C A.
Well, but, so they'll miss the, because they have three businesses under one E I N number, they have too many employees. And so we've got to figure out a way to allow people to apply. If they're operating under one E I N, but they're operating five different sites. I mean, even, even a smaller franchisee can benefit from this. And so I, I, I'm good with that, but I just wanted to put that out there. There's what, there's some of the reasons why I'm looking at these tweaks. And, you know, Ward Two didn't get a lot of CARES Act money. That's okay. I mean, we have needs around the city. But I just want to stand up for my peeps and in this particular case, this is a big part of Tucson.
All righty. We've got direction, Mr. Ortega.
Mayor?
Yes.
I do. I'm clear on that direction and I appreciate that. We will go down the same path. We'll make those two quote modifications, which should be very easy, shouldn't make it more complex. I will give you weekly updates going forward. The, the last thing I wanted to mention to you, and it goes back to, I believe, Councilman, well, all of you have expressed concern about. and it goes back to, I believe, Councilwoman, well, all of you have expressed concern about getting the dollars out the door for the people that need it. We're going to work really hard to do that. I think you'll be, you'll be pleased with that. But in my memorandum, I also asked for authorization to reimburse the general fund for eligible salary expenses of all unspent CRF. And the reason that I'm doing that is simply to buy us a little more time for this second wave into the next year. The expenditures would still be for COVID-related costs. But what it does is it gives me an opportunity to reimburse eligible salary expenses. So Mayor, I would ask that, that you give me that direction. I know that Councilmember Fimbras has made that motion, did not include that, but I would ask that you consider.
I will make that a friendly amendment to my motion and add that in there for you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
I think Councilman Kozadchik, would you agree to that as a friendly amendment?
Very friendly.
So, so the motion is modified with that request, Mr. Ortega. There's a motion. The second year agreed to the modification. Let's go to a roll call.
Nick Santa Cruz?
Hi.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbras?
Aye.
Mr. Kozadchik?
Aye.
Mayor O'Meara?
Aye. Motion passes 6 to 0. Anything, anything in addition that you'd like to add, Mr. Rankin, Mr. Ortega?
No, Mayor. Just thank you. The one thing I will let you all know is the, your, your understanding of the importance of the crisis reserve when those dollars were originally, originally came in can't be understated. When those initial $95 million were brought forth, you set 33 million aside for the second wave and that was giving you the flexibility to make this kind of a decision tonight. So I just wanted to point that out and thank you all for your leadership and, and staying strong on it. That's all, Mayor.
Well, I just want to thank everyone. Mr. Mr. Rankin, did you want to add anything else?
I did, Mayor, members of the council. With respect to the action you took on item two tonight, everyone's going to want to see the revised and final ordinance and proclamation as soon as possible. I've already started making the conforming revisions consistent with the, the motion that was approved tonight by the mayor and council. But given that the effect of your action is that the, the curfew itself won't begin until 12:04 and that these changes have to be not just written up and finished by me, but then we got to process them and go get the clerk's office to have the mayor formally sign all those things. I just want your expectations to be that this is probably going to be tomorrow morning when it's final, final and publicly available. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Just don't go home tonight. Stay there till you get it done.
He's worked till 1:00 before, so go ahead, Mr. Rankin. No, I, I want to especially thank my colleagues for, for making themselves available, for wanting to have a discussion sooner rather than later. I appreciate your response to it and I wanted to make sure that all of us on this table, including Mr. Ortega and Mr. Rankin, had the opportunity to discuss this, to act on it and to do it in solidarity with each other and unanimously. So I know that I brought a different, a, a different proposal to the table, but I was willing to get your input and feedback and for all of us to do this together, but do something. Because status quo is not good for any, not good for individuals that are getting COVID, not good for small businesses if COVID continues and not good for the city of Tucson in any way in terms of losing lives or continuing to lose our small businesses that we all care for. So as we leave tonight, I'm grateful that we acted together and that we came out with something especially in terms of the economic relief, not something that we all can hold hands in and push forward together. So thank you all for making time and have a good rest of the week and be safe.